I'd like to call to order the Sherburne School Committee meeting of March 8th, 2016, at 6:34 PM. Let's start with the principal report.
Oh my, hello.
No, we're actually, we're going to do the community comments when we do the public hearing on the budget, which will come after Dr. Brown's reports.
Well, welcome. The principal's report is fairly short and sweet in that we had a meeting very recently. I wanted to highlight some of our professional development efforts around science. I've talked a fair amount about our ELA work with the literacy coaches. We have five sessions carved out this year, early release day professional development sessions, where Chickering and Pine Hill School educators are getting together to collaborate around an inquiry approach to teaching and learning science, problem-solving-based approach, and to better understand the new standards, which we started this work when they were in draft form, and of course, they've been adopted. So, the last early release day, our teachers went through the exercise of looking at the standards and charting what we currently do for life physical earth, science and engineering, and to notice where our units of study are aligned with the new standards and where our teaching isn't reflective of standards areas. And it was an important exercise. I quite frankly was surprised at how much, particularly in earth science and engineering, how many areas we will need to look to incorporate into our curriculum next year. As you know from a former presentation of Dr. Ledoux's, our whole districts will be looking at science as a curriculum revision cycle, and it's very, very timely. So, I wanted to let you know that we're having very stimulating work in the area of science content and pedagogy, and that's a big highlight right now.
Let's say, just segue straight into the update on the school improvement plan?
Excellent. We have three overarching, three overarching areas of improvement that are identified in our school improvement plan for this year. The first is, in the spirit of challenge success, we wanted to commit professional time and resources into looking at use of student time, project and problem-based learning, alternative and authentic assessments, climate of care, and opportunities to educate parents, students, and faculty. Those are the S-P-A-C-E acronym tenants from Stanford University's Challenge Success Program. And to date, we have allocated considerable faculty meeting time, as well as school councils, school advisory council time, our parent-teacher group, to considering our current practices and opportunities for considering and growing structures that better meet climate of care and use of student time, homework, mindful, incorporating mindfulness into classrooms. We've wrote a sizable grant to DSEF that we hope will be funded for next year so that we can further train teachers to bring mindful practices, to reduce anxiety, and help students frame how they approach conflict and problem-solving kinds of challenges. Our teacher workshop day on November 30th, district-wide, was allocated to working with the Resilience Kids Program out of Providence, we have spoken to that. We had considerable teacher interest, about 15 or more Pine Hill educators are interested in more training in that. We're unable to fund that through the district budget, so that's what we're hoping DSEF will fund for us next year. We're strongly considering making a philosophical statement about homework, particularly at the primary grades, and helping teachers to incorporate more opportunities for playtime, downtime, and family time as an extension to school. I mean, obviously, families and parents have prerogatives, prerogatives about how to schedule students, but we, we want to better convey and communicate our hopes around, around more balance and less busy kinds of assignments that are assigned through homework. We certainly believe there's a place for practicing skills and strategies and extending student learning, and we see a great opportunity through the LibGuides repository that Lori Ryan has set up on behalf of our school for families to partake in extended learning opportunities, but not necessarily having them be mandated homework assignments. Some of our teachers have swapped to more project-based, open-ended homework assignments. For example, Ms. Kimball in fifth grade is doing some exciting things where kids certainly still need to communicate through reading and writing their thinking, but more applying problem-solving exploration, creative thinking that aren't necessarily specific to math content, writing content, reading content. And we're having fun with that. We're having fun with that and getting feedback from students. We're about to administer a connection survey to our students. This is an idea that we got from the Chickering School, and we certainly survey our students in many ways, but a piece of, or pieces of information we think will be helpful for us. We're going to ask our students to complete a very simple task and identifying, there'll be a preamble and some context set around the request, but identifying a grown-up in the building and a friend in the building that kids feel connected to. And the purpose of that is to help us have what they call a shadow mentor assigned to kids that maybe don't feel connected for whatever reason. So, looking at ways to collect more, less academic and more climate of care kinds of information. So, the teachers are really excited about considering opportunities to enhance how we structure the classroom, how we, how we make expectations clear of students and engage, engage students in that buy-in with deeper thinking, and I believe this is a venue for that. So, it's been interesting. Considering opportunities for recess before school, so kids can recreate and use physical activity to help them shift into learner's mindset, not just getting off the bus and going into classrooms and launching a math lesson. Our phys ed teacher spearheaded some ideas to have us do school-wide exercise before an all-school meeting. And we're, we're having fun playing with some ideas and strategies, the flipping the early release day that's coming up on April 6th, so that we will have a late-start day as opposed to an early release day, and seeing if kids and parents have any, any thoughts or feelings around that. So, I believe that the Challenge Success Initiative has given us permission to step back and look holistically at what we're doing and why, and why we're, some of the things that are automatic and in place for us are deserving some more intentional thought. So, our school advisory council will be surveying parents around a couple tenants, including perceptions around homework, school and faculty responsiveness to families, students' sense of connection and engagement in their learning. We survey families every couple of years to inform us on matters of school improvement, but the kinds of probes we'll be asking are shifting a little bit, because this is the information that we want, that we feel will inform us at this time. So, anyway, the, that's the goal around incorporating challenge success more tangibly at the elementary level. We have a goal around, this is shared across all of our schools, we reported on this a little bit at the Joint School Committee, continuing to support and grow the educator evaluation tool and form and function. The piece that has been interesting to implement and notice this year is the assigning staff members on every alternating year of their two-year evaluation cycle, for those staff members that are deemed to be on a two-year evaluation cycle, the opportunity to have a peer observer and a peer coach under the QPO, the Qualified Peer Observer component. And we have four very ambitious QPOs, and it's, it's been interesting and informative to hear about how they're working with staff members, fellow educators, in very, very different ways, depending on what the wants and needs of those educators are. And I've received excellent feedback from both the QPOs and the participants, and we look forward to continuing to grow that and help that be an important part of our reflective process. The third and final goal, and I've spoken to this a little bit in different, different principal reports, that we will actualize through written documentation our ELA curriculum this year, as school committees members here well know that we have been for four years now, this is my fourth year. So, for the past three years, we have been engaging literacy coaches through consulting, through educational consultants, teachers for teachers, to come in and help grow the capacity, practices, assessments, strategy-based instruction, and consistency within and across our grade levels with regard to the teaching of reading and writing. And I, with confidence, can say that we have gained a great momentum. We still have, we still have, I think that the process of reading and writing and teaching reading and writing feels, feels infinite, and with lots of research out there, we're working to stimulate and grow our teachers, and I believe that teachers would report that they feel very, very grateful for the opportunity, that we've had small groups, individual coaching, whole group, lots of different, lots of different structures to help grow the capacity of our teachers. I see us continuing that work next year, but taking it to a higher level where the hope is to coach teachers and grow teachers to be able to coach one another in a peer support kind of a model, and really, really have a deep and rich discourse about practices, where the echelon of a professional learning community. So, by the close of this year, we will have in Aspen our reading and writing units of study for every grade level.
That's a big undertaking.
It's, ELA is, it's sometimes not as tangible as some of the sciences and some of the math concepts we teach. It's very process-oriented, so it feels, it's been messier work, but very, but very rich conversation.
So, in the process of creating what's going to ultimately be published on Aspen, has it been built in how to continually update and modify so that it's a living document?
That is very much agreed upon in our work, that everything is fluid and continually...
But is there more of a, I'm thinking more of a mechanism to make sure that gets done? Because I know there's so much going on at all times, and then you'll be diving into science, and so then ELA. It's not that it won't be a focus, but updating and maintaining what's online may not be. So, is there, I'm thinking that some sort of mechanism just to make sure that those documents continue to be updated.
Yes, thank you. Because they're in Aspen, which is the learning management system, anytime an educator looks at those units and wants to change something, they'll work together in their grade level to do so within Aspen. So, that's where they'll look for the essential questions, what are the goals of the lesson, what are some of the assessments, I could add assessments to it as a grade level. So, it becomes that working, living document, not something that's, you know, printed and put on the shelf. So, they're, by virtue of the collaborative time our educators have as grade-level educators, they'll, they'll update those maps as they go along, and I've seen it happen at the region.
And I'm confident that we will realize many opportunities to make those maps more robust as we look at science and social studies in particular. As you know from our conversations, the, the amount with revision of our state standards, the amount of time that kids are expected to be writing and informational writing and reading and nonfiction genre are significantly more proportionate than they were in the past. So, I see lots of opportunities for cross-curricular, where we emphasize a reading strategy through a, through a science concept, those kinds of connections will be, will be realized.
So, it seems that part of the reason to put on Aspen, I like the idea of it being, that helps make it much more of a living document, but it's also so that parents have access, so how is the, so they can see what's going on? What is being done to create a process so that parents feel engaged with the SIP?
We have, I've had preliminary conversations only because our efforts have been in teaching teachers how to access Aspen and, and the tenants of the UBD Design of Curriculum. We will be creating parent-friendly access in parent-friendly language to, to what we call Stage One and Stage Two in Aspen.
Just the essential questions and the goals, and some of the teaching strategies. We don't have a way for families and community members to access Aspen, that hasn't been developed yet, that was my hope. So, what will happen is I have a webpage for ELA, math, science, social studies, that I will then go in, copy the Stage One portion of all the maps and put it to that page. And once that's completed, we will let the families know that it's there. That will become a static document, so I think that's changed in Aspen, has that document will then be updated. But that's our way of communicating to families what those units are and what the objectives are, and the learning standards.
Something else we've incorporated, I don't want to go into too much detail, but I want to be responsive to the, for the level of information that you're, you're curious about. Something that we started doing this year, you've heard us talk over the last few years about developing common assessments or refining our common assessments to make sure that they're robust and informative, so teachers can look, not just within their class, to inform student progress and instructional goals, but across a grade level, so teachers can be inspired to share effective teaching practices. That is all still growing, but something we instituted this year are what we call on-demand assessments. And that was, that, that felt icky and squishy for us to, you know, from six years old to 10 or 11 years old, to say, "Here's an assessment, you may or may not know the content, but we want you to show us what you know." And it, it felt, it felt a little harsh, particularly for kindergarten teachers back in the fall. And we have really grown as teachers, as a collective group of teachers, to understand that it doesn't, that there's a place for that, that how can, how can we customize our instruction to be truly effective if we don't do more robust pre-assessment, and that it doesn't have to be presented in a way that feels ominous to students. It's, you know, "Show us what you know." You may remember this, you may not. You may have been exposed to this, you may not, but it, I feel like it's, it's, that has been a very effective piece at getting teachers to look not just at this as the unit of study that we teach, but this is, these are what the 2018, whatever learners in front of me need individually and collectively. And there's been a lot of power in using assessment more informatively.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? I appreciate that. It sounds really very exciting, and I'd like to, I'd kind of like to go back to elementary school. It sounds like it's so different than it was even 27 years ago. So, it's constantly changing, keeps it exciting.
I say this in many ways, it's exhausting keeping up, keeping up with the wondrous and loquacious and curious children that we have in front of us, and that's the beauty of our work, that, because the kids are pushing us. And the use of technology, the use of the things that kids are researching, the information they have at their fingertips. We had a second grader correct his teacher, they're studying tide poles right now, and the second grade student had information, content information that the teacher didn't have, none of us had, and he was correct. We now know that sharks can adapt to, certain species of shark, sharks can adapt to live... Kids are, kids are helping us grow what we teach and why we teach it. It's very stimulating.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, is this a voteable item? Are we supposed to vote on the improvement plan?
This is not the next year's improvement plan, this is...
This is a update on last year's...
Well, it's on the current year's improvement plan as opposed to FY '17.
Because I thought I heard you was talking about that these are some of the things that they also going to continue to work on, that they're going to be implementing as opposed to, and that they have started, yes. Okay, all right.
Yeah, if you, actually, if you go and look at the current school improvement plan that's online, that's what she was talking, it's like an update on it. But thank you for reminding us, because at one, some point, we do need to, but the new one, not yet, that happens, I believe in September. All right, I think that we're going to move to the public hearing on the proposed FY '17 budget. And under this agenda item, a presentation based on our version 3.0 will be made. Upon completion of the presentation, there'll be time for members of the public to make comments and to ask questions. Questions and comments should be specific to the FY '17 budget. And because there've been multiple opportunities for many members of the public to make comments about this year's budget, I ask that efforts made to try to keep comments to those that add something new to the discussion, although clarification, questions about clarification are always welcome. Once public comments are completed, the public hearing on the budget will be, will be closed, and the meeting will move to Agenda Item 4, where school committee members will have the opportunity to comment and discuss FY '17 budget prior to taking a vote to approve it. Make sense? So, Mr. McCollis?
Nope, not both.
Little mood, little mood, huh?
I've been told I'm in the dark many times.
I think the pink one first, then the middle one.
Just wait till...
The bulb has to warm up.
Generally, we're going to need to be elementary school students towards technology.
Yeah.
Okay, iPad.
The one in the center.
Is the iPad awake?
Yep, there you go.
Perfecto.
Yeah, it sounds like it's getting better.
I'm going to speak. The mic will pick me up.
He's loud.
So, good evening all, thank you for attending this evening. Good to see most of you again, so welcome back. In tonight's public hearing presentation, we're going to focus on four areas, guidelines, assumptions, we'll do a budget overview, and then a summary. There are three overarching guidelines that the committee and the administration has attempted to follow as we've developed this FY '17 budget. The first is preserve quality of teaching, which is really important, to meet state federal mandates, and then supporting the direct instructional services. Say a couple of words about each one. In terms of preserving excellence in education, the goal of this budget is to maintain the high quality of teaching and curriculum that the community, parents, staff, and school committee expects and has been in place. The second, maintaining a safe and secure learning environment, you know, this includes our daily routine of practices in working with students, working with staff, making sure that staff review on an annual basis, you know, what the safety plan is. We have certain protocols for certain situations, and the school during the year practices a number of those. But it also includes, and it's an important aspect, I think, of this budget, is maintaining the physical plant, the core of the building, although there have been additions over the years, but it's important to note that the core of this building, the Pine Hill School, you know, will be, is celebrating its 60th anniversary. And, you know, in my opinion, the town has really done a very, very fine job in providing the resources to maintain that facility, and of course, that's, that's one of our overarching guidelines going forward. And then fiscal responsibility. So, we've worked hard this year with, in engaging with the Sherburne Advisory Committee in looking at a different way of developing the budget, some call it zero-based, some terms are, you know, trend budgeting based on historical spending, and we've worked very hard in that regard. And an important part of this, of course, is being responsive, putting together a responsibly , fiscally responsive budget, responsible budget, and I think that we've done that. And then, in terms of looking at the needs for next year, and in particular, what this budget really focuses on, the new additions are FTEs, so staff, and so, you know, we're committed and we want to be responsible to maintain, maintaining in our hiring for next year, you know, the high-quality educators that we have, that we've been able to do over the years. There are, there are some key assumptions that we've utilized as we've built this budget and revised it over the last number of months. One of our assumptions and key assumptions was the continuation of the K-12 initiative to develop a fully integrated elementary-level FEST program, and this is part of a truly district-wide initiative. The Chickering School in Dover is engaged in the same initiative, and this will lead into the middle school in a few years. For next year's budget, that initiative includes the funding for additional FTEs to be able, FTEs to be able to move the program into third grade, and I think all of you are familiar with that initiative. Of course, enrollment has really been one of the key assumptions here and has been the focal point of all of our budget discussions. This budget does contain two additional, funding for two additional classroom positions, and in addition to that, we've been having conversations with the advisory committee as we monitor the enrollment going forward, that in fact, we may indeed be coming back to the advisory committee for reserve fund transfer to fund additional FTEs based on how enrollment progresses over the next few months. An assumption that has, has actually developed during the course of this budget development process is working with the SAC to establish a, a special education stabilization fund. And the advisory committee will be sponsoring a warrant article for the Ingledham meeting to establish such a fund, and with the establishment of this fund, with an initial, the projection is an initial funding of $100,000, that will really serve as, as a reserve account for the school committee to be able to access going forward in cases of unexpected expenditures related to special education, which can happen at the drop of a hat and often just can't be, can't be projected. So, what has happened in the past has been some flexibility in the way that the state's circuit breaker reimbursement funds have been, have been allocated within the budget. This budget increases the amount of state circuit breaker aid that's being on an annual basis that will go directly to paying for those services. There's still some flexibility of about $40,000, $42,000 with the level of, of funding for those expenses, so that gives the school committee some flexibility there. The special education stabilization fund will really provide that flexibility for those kind of moving, unanticipated expenditures, and will allow the committee to, to operate the budget without having to impact... without having to impact the regular education programs, because those costs are mandatory, we have to figure out a way to pay for them regardless. And then, one note, it's not impacting FY17, but I think it's important to understand, again, moving forward, that the teacher contract and all of our, the other four collective bargaining contracts that we have with our other employees, those will, those will be three-year, what am I trying to say? Expire, will be expiring at the end of the FY17 year, so negotiations will begin during the year for successor agreements to those. And so, we, we just need to be aware of that, and that will be an important component for, for the FY18 budget process. So, a quick budget overview, and I want to really underscore the first bullet point there. So, we have built this budget based on the fact that we're projecting 397 students, could be more than 397 students, but we're, we're watching that carefully. However, the current year's budget was created and finalized at about the same time a year ago, just 12 months ago, but the assumption at that time is that the enrollment would be 365 students. And everybody knows the story, I'm not going to go ahead and repeat that, but we opened the year with 379 and have grown as of March 1st to 387 students, and so, there's, there's really, and we know, we, we know we're going to hit that 397 mark, we're pretty sure, if not go over it. So, in, in less than a year, our enrollment is growing significantly, and so, the additional classrooms as a result of that. Again, as, as I understand, in previous years of this budget, we developed, the school committee, the administration, does work closely with the advisory committee around the fiscal, the fiscal aspects of this. Advisory every year provides us with some budget guidance and a number to shoot for our proposed budget. As it stands now, the version 3.0 remains, remains about $78,000 above that guidance, and we've had this discussion, and I'm confident that advisory committee understands that at this point, we've really done the best job we can in developing this budget. And my hope is, and my expectation is that the school committee will later on vote the version 3.0 number. And my, my assumption, of second budget assumptions, is that the advisory committee will support that. Another way to look at our budgets, you know, in one of the earlier slides, we spoke to the fact that our regular education specialist teachers make up a little over 40% of the budget. The reality is, though, in terms of salaries, the reality is that when you, when you add in the salaries of all of our other support staff, you know, this budget represents, is made up of, over 72, 72% of the budget is made up of salaries. And, you know, it's the FTEs, it's the people that we support through this budget that really, again, in my opinion, make the difference in terms of the high quality of services that we provide. Another way to, oh, we have another summer slide, but that's, that's okay. No, that's good. Yep. So, so as, I think all of you know, you've been attending the meetings, the budget development process has been an iterative process. We've gone through a series of adjustments to the budget as, as we've gone through a process of really scrutinizing every single line item. Back at the beginning of February, there were some adjustments to the originally proposed budget of approximately $133,000. These are the different line items that we identified and talked about at that time, and as you can see, a number of the adjustments are based on, you know, the trend budgeting model that has been utilized. And then, we've been able to, we were able to reallocate some resources from funding, making some adjustments in how we look at the circuit breaker reimbursement to, to fund some of these other lines. At the end of February, there were some additional adjustments made. These adjustments, which totaled about, about $50,000, $7,000 in net, the vast majority of them were, again, after further scrutiny based on historical spending, were made, with the exception of, and we use similar, similar avenues of, of making adjustments that we did in version 2.0 in terms of reallocating some resources, et cetera. The last two line items, though, I think it's important to understand, after this scrutiny and making these adjustments, in order to get to a position where we felt strongly that we were continuing to maintain through this budget the quality that we expect and providing the additional FTEs that we need, in order to get a little further, we did have to make some decisions based on priorities. And so, the last two really represent that. The, the adjustment of removing a .2 FTE of the tech, technology integration specialist, that's part of a district-wide 1.0 FTE where that person was spending .2 of their time working with Pine Hill staff, the other .8% of the time working with middle school and high school staff. Chicaring had a piece of that, a .2 piece. Previously, they, they removed that from their budget last year. And our experience is that our staff are, are able to, will, will be able to do quite well, they're becoming much more familiar with, with technology, and our, our computer specialist at, at the elementary school, we've looked at what had happened in Chicaring for the past year, and that position is, has been able to, over there, interact much more with the staff. They're there every day and have been able to support them, and we expect the same thing to happen here. And we have other staff members that will support our staff in that regard as well. And then, in terms of looking at our teacher aid salaries, we currently have employed nine regular education teacher assistants, and so, we're, this budget proposes that that will be reduced by one. And again, in, in working with Barbara, we, we believe strongly that those AFTs will, will be able to support our classroom teachers, three of whom will be dedicated, at least now, to the three sections of kindergarten, and if we need to add a fourth, then, you know, we expect that, whatever the number of kindergarten sections will be, those teachers will be supported with a teacher assistant as well. That's how we get to the, the bottom line number. This is just another visual of, of our enrollment trends. As you can see, over the last two years, we've been, enrollment has been steady. The previous six years, enrollment had declined, and we're now seeing a, an increase in that. It certainly appears that the enrollment trend will continue on an upward trajectory, certainly for, certainly into next year, and I would imagine beyond that as well. Here's, here's the bottom line summary of the proposed budget, it stands at $6,489,275, and just tells a little different, the same story in a different way. We've talked about and already highlighted what the FY17 budget will include. Again, two of our, our classroom teachers, a half-time teacher for the expanded FEST program. Talked about the enrollment, talked about the change in the circuit breaker allocation. In terms of student enrollment concerns, you know, we're monitoring the enrollment very carefully. Moving forward, we've projected a certain number of kindergarteners, you know, we haven't reached that level, but we expect that if, if, if the same pattern this year continues compared to last year, we'll see more positive students. And the committee is, I think, in large part, committed to continuing to work with advisory, and as those numbers change, again, if they say that, you know, another section is needed, we'll find a way to do that. I'm confident of that. We'll find a way and, and we'll do that. One, one last comment in terms of enrollment and how it relates to a, a past practice that the school has had in terms of notifying parents and students about next year's assignment. Barbara and I have talked about this, there's been a tradition where families know on the last day of school what next year's assignment is. What we've talked about is the possibility of making an adjustment to that timeline, given that we believe the numbers will, will, will probably change as we go into the summer. We would prefer, the, the, the idea is that it's better to be in a position where if we have to add another section, or we have to make some changes, we want to do that, we want to do that prior to parents having, knowing what their assignment is rather than saying, here's your assignment, and then halfway into the summer, having to call parents and say, we need to make a change because of enrollment, so we're adding another section. So, so we're going to talk more about that, and, but, but I know Barbara will keep the parent community appraised of what's going to happen in that regard, but we thought it would be best to just kind of put that out there as early as possible so that, so that if we do go down that road, parents, parents are surprised. Next is the presentation, and I know we'll have to take comments or questions at this time. It's okay if they're on today, I think a lot of them are going to ask.
I guess I have one data what you just said. Traditionally, the kindergarten doesn't obviously take part in that move-up date or know their, their assignments until August, so if that's the class that we're looking at as the enrollment kind of closely, why wouldn't you then be able to do it for the rest of the rising classes?
Well, I, I think, given, just given the way that, you know, the enrollments are projected, we're already, across all the grade levels, you know, we're really, we're, we're close to what those projections are, and, you know, for example, first grade, you know, there's still, we're projecting 64 students, we're still at 57, we're projecting 64 students in first grade. Just wanted to touch that. No, we're projecting 57 students in first grade, we still just have 47 kindergarten students. That projection is in line with what the, the movement has been, so we think that that's, I'm hoping, and that's the one grade we haven't, kindergarten is the one grade where we haven't seen additional enrollment really throughout the year, where as of March 1st, we're actually a couple of kids below where we started from in September. But that can be deceiving, so, so, so we just want to make sure that, for example, first grade, you know, if, if for some reason, we have 17 kids coming to first grade, then that's going to create a problem at first grade.
Next year's second grade is particularly, if, if everything stays the same right now, next year's second grade will have the largest class size, so if we picked up a new cohort there.
That's just another number example, so, but we'll continue to talk about that.
So, I guess, as a follow-up, that means that the current projection of four sections of third, fourth, and fifth grade is also fluid.
Well, well, I think we've been clear in the comments that we've made that, as we've projected those numbers on the screen, we've, we've been clear to say that those are examples right now of what the numbers would look like, and we're not 100%, I think it's fair to say, committed to, to those numbers, but, but we've talked enough about it that it's, I would say it seems likely. But, you know, if we see, for whatever reason, and again, I think this would be, I don't think this is likely, but if we saw, if we saw an unexpected outmigration of students at the fourth or fifth grade, you know, that, that might then inform the number of sections and then, you know, how we then deal with the other grades. So, so it's very fluid, and, you know, I know that, I know that families want to know as soon as possible what the assignment is. I've been through in a couple of different districts, I've gone through the process of, of taking that timeline and moving it later in the summer. You know, it's, it's, it's a change, but the outcome has not been, you know, has not proven to be problematic. So, it's something we're discussing.
Yeah, I would say that I don't necessarily need to know which teacher my child has, knowing how many sections there will be prior to August.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think our goal is, you know, by August 1st, that's when we will be communicating, hopefully we have a good idea, but again, you know, that, we see a lot of, last summer, we saw a lot of students register in August, so, it's a challenge. It's a challenge.
I guess just as a follow-up to that, I, I mean, I've heard you say this before, and I thought the point was pretty well understood, that there's no guarantee that there will be four sections in fifth grade next year, right? Or fourth grade or third grade?
Right now, that's, that's what we've been saying.
And, and that's part of what, I mean, you can't say any assignments in any of the grades, because nobody's guaranteeing how many sections there are going to be.
As of right now.
Right.
Correct.
Right, or, or even maybe in May or June.
No, we're not sure. We, again, we, we need to go through this experience.
I had, so I had a different question about the Piter. Operating budget of $6,489,275. Regular education salary is at 43% of that, which gets you to $2,790,388 and 1/4, 25 cents. I'm trying to figure out how you get to that number, and I've been doing, I've got a page of math here, I'm just trying to figure out which exactly, exactly which salaries are in that $2.7 million.
So, so next year's salary budget.
Salary budget.
Are based on FY16 actual, and placing them on the FY17 salaries.
Sure.
So, it includes all the classroom teachers, it includes the FEST teacher, it includes the...
Music.
Yes, and then it also includes the specialists, music, physical education, art, health.
But not administration.
But not administration, that's, that's, I gotta find a separate way.
So, it includes?
It, it would include the regular, it would also include the regular education teacher assistants.
Sure. So, I mean, we, I just can't get the math to add up. I mean, I can do it, it's $1,757,357 in teacher salaries, another $274,410 in kindergarten type of salaries, another $10,100 in longevity, that's $2,41,867, so that gets us to everything but $554,015.25. Then you've got $124,178 for regular classroom aides, $70,328 for kindergarten aides, that's another $194,506, that gets you to, I'm sorry, the first number should have been 748,521, the next one's 554, so the teachers and the aides account for all but $554,015.25 of that $2.7 million. So the teachers and the aides account for all but $554,015.25 of that $2.7 million. It's that 554 I'm having trouble figuring out.
I'm missing the art, music, PE.
Art, music, PE, library, and computer teachers altogether are $455,321. I can break it down if you want me to.
No, no, you didn't say that as you were listening to it, I didn't hear you say that.
Right, no, I didn't. It's $554,015.25 left over in the 43% after you take out all the teachers. Take out art, music, PE, library, computer, you still got $98,694.25 on account of four.
Okay, so what's the delta here on four? $98,000?
98,000. 98,000.
So let me, okay, I need to throw up. So Zach, we'll go back and look at that. But the one thing I can assure you, and I have to go back and look through the different line items, everything adds up to the $6,489,000.
For sure.
We're not hiding any salary money in here, which is not. So if that's the assumption, I just want to assure you we're not. You know, I can't, while we're standing here off the top of my head, go through and then add everything up. So I would need to do that. Now, I'll look at that so that we can get back and have an answer to your question. And I'm happy to do that. But there are, there are a number of other line items. There's the curriculum leader stipends that are included in that. And there are, there are a host of lines that we'll go through and identify.
And there's a couple pieces of folks at central office that are not administrative that we can contribute to.
Yeah.
And a small salary for art and teacher.
So one of the, one of the things that I've learned going through this process, which is a little different than what I've experienced in the past, is that, is that, and, you know, this is, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but there are, there are, in these lines, for example, the regular headline, you know, we have the fust teacher in that line. My experience is that that would be part of the specialist, that should be contributed to the specialist budget line. So there's a number of examples that throughout, throughout the line item budget, where we have historically designated certain expenditures that, based on my previous experience, should be designated in other budget lines. And that is one of the processes we'll engage in over the course of the spring as we, once the final budget is approved, we go through a process of taking this data and plugging it into our financial management system called BudgetSense, which is where all of our other budget documents that come from, where we track, you know, the budget through the year. And we'll be making some adjustments. We'll be, we'll be adding some salary, we'll be adding some line items that fully explain, when you look at it, you'll say, oh yeah, that's what that funds. And we'll be making some adjustments and changing some. So that's been part of the confusion. And Zach, to your question, you know, I've probably had that discussion in the office more than once, on more than one occasion across all three budgets as we've, as we've gone through this process. But I understand what you're trying to do. It just, as I've, as I've learned, it's a little more complicated, and there are a number of other lines that you wouldn't necessarily think it, given, you know, given how we've identified this on this pie chart that are included in those, you know, in that 42%.
I'm assuming guidance is probably in there because it doesn't...
It is, the guidance helps us.
And yours.
And that's not, and that's not, that would not be in any of those other buckets. And that's...
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's part of the confusion.
Well, yeah, so there's guidance at 105,241 and psychologist at 55,624. But you had those and...
Psychologist is considered a spent position.
Yeah, that would be a...
But the school nurse, the school nurse would be considered a regular item.
Okay. And I guess just what I'm getting is, we've got a, I mean, it's a big piece of the pie, and it should be a big piece of the pie when we talk about 43%. But when we talk about, say, classroom teacher salaries, not the aides, not the specials, and I'm not saying those things aren't important, I'm saying when we talk about the classroom teacher salaries, which is this thing we've been talking about for months, it's more like 31% of the total. And it's just hard to see how that breaks down when we, when we lump all these things and when we make, you know, sort of distinctions, psychologist, nurse, you know, special education not, it becomes very opaque.
So I think it's just, I think it's really hard to, there could have been 50 categories just about. I'd say I put this together. And I just, I based it on past, what's been done in the past, and actually broke out a couple of different categories. So I just think this is just to be a visual. And I think that you've got, you made a good point talking about the classroom teachers. That's something that probably should have been added, especially given the conversations this year. But this is just meant to be a visual to get a sense of where the money is going. It wasn't meant to be this very specifics of each... Like the very specifics because it is a little bit like, so does Robin Nance feel, does she all understand, or is she under... Sometimes, some years, she does a lot of classroom work, and so you just don't know. So that's part of what education is, is that in school, you've got to be flexible based on the needs of the students at any given time. And so it isn't always black and white, which I think is really hard, especially for real budget crunchers.
Any other questions?
Can I ask, how many, so the fed salaries are basically almost 50% of the regular education salaries there. How many fed teachers are there as compared to how many regular teachers are there?
It's also part of, what I've learned in this process is that it's not, even though we have FTEs, at least for classroom teachers, it's not all, it's hard, and I would like to understand, how to nail it all down, but it's not, it's not one-on-one, or it's not, you know, they're not doing the same thing, or maybe completing a full day, or that type of thing.
Including preschool. 5.5, including preschool.
But there's OT, speech, PT, site. Who have I forgotten?
And some of those are shared as district positions, and some of them are part-time positions, and some are full-time positions. So it's tricky. A couple of our support members are contractual services, so they're not even in the salary budget, they're contractual. So...
Special education, educational assistance are included in that.
And then just as a quick follow-up, I know special education, from what I've read in the state of Massachusetts and the country, is kind of a hot topic, right? And so are we trying to sort it in line with other districts? Thinking that, again, seeing that we're almost half, half, approximately 50% spent on fed and regular, but all are...
Right. So special education, it's been a hot topic for as long as it's been around. But I will tell you from my previous experience that Sherburne has done a really fine job containing special education costs. The number of students who are identified as having IEP are slightly below the state average, below are compared to districts. And in particular, the district has done a really fine job, especially over the last number of years at the elementary level of including students within the regular education program as opposed to placing them at district in specialized programs.
That's actually been a concerted effort, is that work of trying to keep those students in and keeping them as inclusive, which helps to make that number go a little higher because now we have those, you know, highly trained, very specific type of...
So I would tell you the percent of total special education cost compared to the entire budget is less than the state average, and again, less than our comparative margins. Thank you.
I'd just like to add a comment to that. I appreciate these detailed questions, because I've tried to look at that. And it's really hard in Sherburne because we're a one-school district. And every place else is, has all the schools, and it's really hard to compare. Maybe it's Carlisle, maybe? I mean, there's very few other places like this, even though I take that as an answer, oh, it's hard to doubt. But I would also say, you've got to balance it with the out-of-district cost, because this is truly a case where everybody is different, and the services needed are really different. Herefore, people would say that you have such great services that Sherburne was a magnet for special ed. Well, then, you can do is look at the state numbers and see that our total expense on special ed is, we're not, we're not spending a lot more than any place else. In fact, we're spending less than a lot of places. So we're not attracting that, a little bit, we should say, to that.
One thing that we've seen on the, from Sherburne Advisory, just with the meetings that we've had in Dover Warren, just comparing Pine Hill to Chickering even, where, from what I've heard, and Tracy could probably come wrong, Pine Hill does a better job of keeping kids in, or has been more successful on keeping more kids in district than they have across the river.
Another piece that we don't talk about, because statistically, it's a very small percentage of our population, but the percentage, or the number of students that need English-language learner services has doubled. Again, you can play with statistics, when you go from five to ten children to 10 children. But a piece, also Zach, and I forget where it falls in the line items, but we have an English-language learner teacher in addition to a tutor. We pay a portion of a district teacher's position, so...
Excellent.
I had a comment and a question. I wanted to return to Amy's earlier comments about the concern among some of the parents about the division of how the classes will be divided up. And while I totally understand why you can't necessarily make any definitive statements at this time, it's worrisome for some parents for sure. I'm a parent of a fourth grader, and I just wanted to respectfully submit the fact that many parents have shown up in support of those smaller class sizes and that we are hoping that you would honor the four sections of fifth grade. That will be my son's class next year. And then I know the plan is possibly four sections in fourth, four sections in going down the line, fifth, fourth, and third, which I think is a great plan. And I just wanted to put that comment out there. And I know you recognize there are a lot of parents that have been communicating with you and showing up to the meeting. So I certainly wanted to make that statement. And then I just had a question about sort of what, what happens next. I know that there's going to be a vote tonight, and just out of curiosity, if it is approved, the 3.0 budget, even though there's like a gap that between what we're voting on and what you recommended, is that like a red flag when it goes to town meeting? Does, do the people say like, oh, we need to be worried about this?
Well, we have a public hearing on Saturday where we then recommend all the different operating budgets throughout town. Sherburne School Committee came and presented to us last week this budget. I feel the committee in general is positive on where they've gotten to by adding two additional sections and still reducing the budget from last year. It's pretty impressive. So we're, I think we're on board where it is now. And then, so we, I have, I'm confident, as Bill said, that Saturday we'll recommend this budget to be approved at town meeting. Now, I can't tell you what citizens will want to do at town meeting, but that's, that's where we stand at this point.
George, do you remember that town meeting, ever voted a budget less than what we've gotten?
This is only my thinking here.
Town meeting ever voted a budget less than what we've gotten?
Well, I think sometimes there have been, you know, years ago, things on the, on the floor where, you know, you recommend a million, we recommend a million too. So the way that works is then is that you do your million, and then if someone on the committee or feels strongly about it, they could say, I'd like to amend that to a million too. And the process then is you bid on, you vote on the higher number first. So you vote on the higher number. If that fails, then you vote on the next lower number. And so...
But that's only, but that's only if we disagree.
That's right.
Is, maybe I've been to 10 town meetings, and when they were doing overrides, that was different. But every time that advisory has recommended a number, I've never seen the number that advisory recommended being voted down if another number is not...
For a school budget.
For a school budget, thank you. Sorry. For a school budget, when another number has not been presented. That makes sense.
In my 19 years of superintendent, I've been to 30 town meetings where the school budget was being voted on. In every single instance where the school committee, the finance committee, finance committee, in this case, the advisory committee, was on the same page going into town meeting, town meeting has approved that budget. It's been in different places, but I think that the processes and the thinking is probably similar.
Yeah, so I think you're right. After Saturday, if they approve it, nothing's guaranteed, parents should still come to the meeting.
Right.
But, you know, it would be unlikely that we go a different direction.
And on that, on that note, I just want to add, on the last Wednesday, we also approved, including the warrant article for the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which does need a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So, and unfortunately, it's one of the last articles on the warrant. So the budget's going to be in the beginning, but the Special Education Stabilization Fund is at the end. We're also going to vote to fund it, we're also going to, well, propose to fund it with $100,000, which is what they're over on certain, approximately what the budget is to FY16 budget is over certain record issue.
And you will present that.
Yes, yes, that warrant article is coming from advisory, we're presenting it.
And again, as we mentioned in the previous two meetings, it's really important to have all the parents there so that we can get that, because that's a, that's a large component from us on this line item that we have on here, not on this slide, but on the other one, where we're going from the 40 to the 60%. That having that stabilization fund gives us that, that buffer, so to speak, you know, in case anything happens, so there's a move-in or something. So it's really important that that happens. So the more people we can get out there is, you know, either come, I'm not saying when they come, but just to be there for that vote.
Wait, when should we do that?
Actually, and just based on the total warrant this year, it's actually shorter than it has been in many years. And there's, there's been also some years where there's some very controversial issues. There aren't that many that we anticipate. I mean, the warrant article's already, like, drafted, so there's no new articles coming on, and everything that's on there, nothing's super controversial. I mean, there'll be some discussion around some capital items, that kind of thing, but so hopefully it won't be a long, long...
So this is Saturday?
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about town meeting.
Okay, town meeting.
Yeah. We're also going through all of it on Saturday, too.
So a question on what you're saying about how this budget gives us some buffer to kind of hope for what happens this past year.
This stabilization fund gives us a budget on the special ed in case something happens.
Understood, I just meant the point in general. So what level of buffer does that give us? Like, how much? I mean, I know you probably can't be content, but like, okay, we'll, we'll be okay if we get five additional students above the 397 warrant rejected. But just as a rough estimate, like, how much are we gaining from the approach?
So we're not, because we're budgeting closer to trend and actials, we've reduced our budget, our cushion, but we've talked with advisory, and they've established a fund, or they will establish a fund that will allow us, the basic advice, the cushion for us.
So that's what I'm saying, is that cushion, is there in the event that we get an unexpected number in students?
Well, where we are right now on advisory, this is all going to be done on Saturday. But as of right now, typically, we have about $100,000 reserve fund for the entire town. We, at this point, are projecting that we're going to get about $350,000 for next year just because of this switch to trend budgeting and the anticipation, the main item being Sherburne School Committee needing to come back for teachers. I mean, I think we'll, we'll see where that goes, but, I mean, because there's other departments in town that may want to come back and ask for more money as well. But we have more than doubled, almost, you know, almost quadrupled our reserve fund going into next year, going into fiscal year 17.
There are taxpayers who might want more money, too, right?
Oh, yeah. I mean, well, yeah, I mean, that's the other option. We wouldn't reserve, and the money wouldn't be taxed. So, yeah, we've decided, though, based on the first year of trend budgeting, that we want to keep a reserve fund for this one year to see how this all plays out in an actual year.
If I can just also say that in terms of this special ed, which is, which is what this is kind of geared to, that...
But that's a different fund. That's, that's the stabilization fund. I'm talking about our general reserve fund.
Right. I'm going back to that initial question that you were asking. And one of the parts of this, and this is why special ed is so unique, you use that word, is that the circuit breaker for special ed will pay out next... word, is that the circuit breaker for special ed will pay out next year for the cost that we have this year. So that's why we have that buffer, so that we can go from one year to the next. Should the number, should something come in that would require a higher expense in that particular line item?
I had a teacher's aid question. I was hoping maybe Mr. Repose could give me a quick history lesson. Last year, I read in some of these notes, that last year you added the ninth teacher aide to address a large fourth grade, right? And now we are.
Or, or sort of need within.
So we're focusing more on FY '17 budget questions?
Yeah.
Well, and this is, this is the aide who is now being removed in the FY '17 budget, resulting in the savings of $20,777 rather than, say, perhaps held and moved to the second grade, where we're going to have our largest class sizes outside of kindergarten, where there's an eighth man in the classroom. So I'm trying to understand why that aide was hired in the first place in order to understand why the aide's being released as opposed to being moved to the place where we should probably have a fourth section.
So, you know, specific positions have not been targeted in terms of reductions. It's likely that, there are two pieces to this. The reduction of nine employees to eight, what we're hoping is will not result, we hope what will happen is, it won't necessarily result in an employee losing their job, you know, jobs, people will hold their jobs because of attrition, because there's at times turnover in these positions. Somebody may leave. In terms of the rationale in going from nine to eight, really, is based on looking at some of those examples of class sizes that we've posted, and then looking at where the potential needs will be if we stay at two additional classrooms. We don't know, really, at this point, what those needs will be, but I think it's fair to say, excuse me, that with eight FTEs of regular ed assistance, and I'm just giving you a general overview, specific assignments will be determined by, you know, the building administration, frankly, but with eight, I believe that Barbara would tell you, the plan is that three of those would be allocated at this point to kindergarten, if the numbers stay the same, which would leave five to then be allocated grades one through five. And, you know, that would be determined based on the needs of a core group of kids at a particular grade level. And, you know, perhaps, perhaps, you know, more than one, it doesn't necessarily mean one per grade level either, you know, if those remain in five. It will depend on the needs of a certain group of kids at individual grade levels. And that's how they'll be allocated. But part of that, part of that reduction was, was in realizing that with two additional teachers, it appears that class sizes will be less than, in at least three grades, less than what they've been on average, not this year, because this year is an anomaly, but in previous years, when class sizes have been, you know, well within the range of the guidelines that have been talked about previously. So that was, in large part, our thinking in making, in making that reduction.
And I completely appreciate that you're trying to hit a moving target. I've been there before, and I know how hard that is. I'm just looking at the report that you presented during the January meeting. So you talked about there being nine general education assistants in the standing practice.
So Zach, sorry, I just got to stop you.
I'm used to you.
Pretty much at this point. I just need to have a sign. It's like, okay. All really good questions. Just, we're not digging into the weeds right now.
Can I ask one more?
So if you would like to, if you would like to dig into the weeds some more, once again, with Bill, we're going to vote tonight, but, you know, I.
There's, there's been enough.
Information, yeah.
Comment. There's been tons of information.
Yeah.
I wouldn't corner the superintendent talking to anybody that had detailed questions. And I appreciate your questions, and I've scrubbed the budget, too. And even though there's things that I think they can cut, we're at a point where we have to vote something, and I don't think if it's, and I want to know what regular ed aides do. I think there's more should be cut, but I'm off my soapbox, and we just need to move forward.
We need to move forward, yeah.
But, but, there'll be more budget conversations later to understand, and I think in terms of head counts and things that people are talking about, I think that's, we need, I would like to have more clarity on those myself, but I'm ready to move this.
Can I just ask a quick question? So based on what Bill just said about the expected plan, assuming all things being equal, except 397 students, would you project the highest student-to-teacher ratio to be in the school next year?
Well, just based on the scenarios we've presented, one section would have 22 students.
22, 21, 22, 21, 22. 122 in seventh, and 222s in kindergarten, but there'd also be an aide there if they do what they're doing.
Right. So I'm not really focusing on kindergarten right now because we know those numbers are just.
They're too big.
Yeah, exactly. But based on those scenarios with previous scenarios, which I have to tell you, again, I think is very favorable. Well, everybody has a different perspective, but, you know, from my perspective, that's a favorable place to be.
So can I just, can I close the, I'm going to close the public hearing on proposed FY '17 budget, and thank you very much. Well, now, now we can talk.
I was going to say, I think the normal process would be members of the public to be talking to us in terms of questions about the budget and things like that, right? So I'm happy to dig through any information that I have with anybody, Zach, go through the line items because I'm sure there's stuff that I can understand, and then we can filter that to.
I think that's great.
Other committee members or to the superintendent.
So any one of the questions go to Greg.
I don't think that's quite what I said.
So, members of the committee, do you have comments or questions?
Would we discuss that after it's moved?
Well, we can, if there's anything major we should discuss now, otherwise we'll move and then find if there's minor. All right, so do I hear a motion to accept FY '17 budget at a figure of $6,489,275?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, questions? There being none, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on.
Can I ask a question? Can we get whatever this version three is on the spreadsheet? Can I, can I get that as opposed to, because I think, like, all these deductions?
So that was handed out last week?
I'm talking about, like, on.
Oh, sure. Yeah, would you just send me an email?
Sure.
And we'll send it, yeah. Anyone who wants that electronically is off.
The Sherburne's getting a copy today.
Right. What is the, the idea?
This is the version three budget with all the line items electronic.
Oh, sure, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, could you have sent it out to everybody?
I might also just suggest, if you're thinking about using this presentation, maybe bring this budget and enrollment trends closer to the, that budget overview that includes the enrollment, where you talked about the enrollment.
Sounds good. All right.
Can I make a, just a statement to maybe summarize this? So, first, I would like to thank Barbara and Frank and their staff, in particular Barbara and Frank, though, for their involvement in this budget process. It's been, it's been really important to have them involved, and I hope they feel that they've been an important part of this process. Also, to the central office staff who have worked on this particular budget for the last three months and have done a really fine job. I also want to commend all the parents. There've been a large number of you that have been to the last four meetings. You've expressed your opinions, you've asked good questions, you've made really cogent comments, and it, maybe some of you feel that you've had an impact, maybe some of you don't feel you have or as much as you would want it. But I want to assure you that certainly on the administration, and I know the school committee, we've heard everything you've said, and we've considered that as part of our iterative process. And having, having parents especially involved, I think, is really important. So I want to thank you for taking the time to come out during those meetings. And, you know, even when we don't agree, expressing, you know, your comments and your questions, I think, is really important. And the fact that we've been able to go through this process, you know, in a very respectful way, I think is important, and it speaks volumes to, I think, the commitment that the entire community has regarding education. So I just want to recognize that. And also, school committee, you know, this has been a different kind of a budget process than I've experienced in the past. It's been, it's been really educational, and it's been very helpful for me. And I've learned a lot of new things as a result, which is always, I think, a good thing, is a good thing. So congratulations to the school committee. Also appreciate your input throughout this process as well. Of course, in the end, that's really important in coming to the conclusion and the vote you did tonight. So, thank you. Ian, could I speak on that a second? I would like to echo the appreciation for the support the parents have shown for this process. I mean, we're always, you know, concerned about money because that's what drives this process, but it's good to have your input on, you know, the class size and your concern about, you know, the education your kids are getting every day. And so I really appreciate that. And I also think it's good, not just for the committee to see that, but advisory to see the dedication of the parents, the other townspeople who might now have kids in school to realize, you know, that the strong feeling that people have and the support for the schools. And also, it was good to see at the caucus, the number of people that would be willing to volunteer their time to run for school committee and put themselves out there, and it was really a good process.
Probably a record number, don't you think, Frank? That ran for school committee?
I think it was, yeah. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. Let's move to the monthly financial report.
Thank you, Ian. In your packet, you received a copy of the monthly financial report and the status of appropriations and some, some commentary regarding, regarding the monthly report. I'm not going to go through all of the comments because almost all of them you've seen before. They've carried over from previous reports. But I do want to just address the salary variance. If you look at that, we have a positive variance of $79,000. As we've talked before at all of our previous meetings, some of the lines have positive variances, some are negative variances. Those are explained in the commentary. But it doesn't mean that we'll end the, we'll end the year with the $79,000 variance. There are two line items which we assume we will, we will spend. They have not been encumbered because we don't typically do that, and there's no mechanism, really, to encumber those funds. But the professional development line, we expect fully that, as we go through the remainder of the year, those funds will be spent. Then the $23,000 remaining in the substitute line, we would expect to spend that, as we talked a little bit about at the last meeting. You know, one of the adjustments we made was we adjusted that line because of experience the last couple of years. But if we assume we're going to spend that, it looks like a positive variance at the end of the year of about $52,000. My sense is that we won't spend all the substitute line, but, I'm putting a big but, we still have four months to go, and, you know, we've had good experience up to this point, but you just, you don't know what the future will bring. However, what may be negated against that, given that we, again, still have four more months, is that we have, we're overdrawing the custodial services line because of overtime. A lot of that overtime was realized through, because of some of the capital projects, and we needed staff in the building when work was being done outside of the normal school hours, which was, which was important. So there'll still be some overtime expenses that we would anticipate, but there's, there is room in that variance to accommodate that. On the expense side, things are really holding, holding their own in terms of where we've been in previous months. We're getting a clearer picture, though, of the special education piece, and we do expect, because of some, some positive changes that we've experienced, based on what was projected last year for special education, of district expenses in particular, that will have a surplus in that line, clearly. And at this point, we assume that beyond that, a large percentage of the expenditure lines will be spent. But central office staff is working on kind of coming up with a preliminary projection that we'll have for you at the May meeting. That's it for the financial report.
So let's move on to the annual school committee vote on Massachusetts' school choice law.
Thank you, Ian. So this is, this is very straightforward. You've all, this is an annual item that appears on the school committee's agenda. The school choice law, so-called, has been in existence in Massachusetts for about 23 years now. When the law was changed back in 1993, the law assumes, unless a school committee votes not to participate in school choice, the law assumes that a committee is participating in school choice. So that, in other words, the Sherburne schools would be open to, to students from outside of Sherburne to come in and enroll. So, so for a lot of very good reasons, the school committee has annually, over that period of time, voted not to participate in school choice. In most communities, you know, those reasons are based on, you know, space availability, that communities just don't have space available to accept choice students. There are other reasons why committees vote that as well, but in terms of Pine Hill, it's very clear that even if there was a consideration of participating, there's just no space, available space to do that. So the recommendation, as in previous years, is that the Sherburne Public Schools vote not to participate. And an important part of this process is that we're required, again, under that same state law, to record the school committee's vote on whether to participate or not, and that has to be communicated to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education prior to May 1st, so.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to not, to have the Sherburne Public School not participate in school choice program for the 2016, 2017 school year?
So move. Second.
Discussion?
So, we've, every year, as you said, Bill, we've always voted not to do, to do that. It's always kind of been a question of mine because, and especially, not now, where our class sizes are set so at the point in that they're growing, but our class sizes were, at one point, were shrinking, and we did have extra capacity. And what we actually do with some of that extra capacity is we brought in and use that extra capacity with the tech and the sub collaborative for some of the special ed. We use that in place of bringing students in, because that is, bringing students in does bring in some finance that comes along with that. You don't, you're a little bit buffeted from the special ed cost because of the original school. But where we are now, it's, it really does not make any sense, especially with the, with the trend that we're going to for the next couple of years. And if we go back on a decline, it'd be something to reconsider. Just wanted to provide that extra detail on this topic.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so, 5-0, Ian this far. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're now moving to the consent agenda for the school committee minutes for February 9th and February 25th. So, we're going to have a chance to look through them, and are there any changes?
I just have one minor one in, in item number seven, capital budget. The second it was by Mr. Hoek, but it's H-O-O-K, and it's actually H-O-E-K.
Oh, okay.
Had they put C-P-T in front of that, then I'd be okay.
Any other changes? All right, so, all in favor?
Motion?
Oh, so, motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Second? Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, we've got the, can we just talk about before we end, the next, our next meeting is December 10th. No, December, goodness, so...
Mary!
It is been a long couple weeks. All right, May 10th, that's election day. We've had the, our meeting that same day in past years, over at Pine Hill, because it can't be here. And because we, it starts early enough, the polls aren't still closed, so we can get through any agenda items ahead of time. Is anybody opposed to doing that?
Makes sense.
And then we have a little bit of a short meeting, then perhaps a little bit of a celebratory goodbye to our Franks.
Yeah.
It's May 10th, Tuesday, May 10th.
But if that's election day...
The election, the polls don't close till eight, I believe, so if we start at 6:30, we can...
Yeah, someone could come in at 8:10 and say, move over, Frank. I'm thinking...
They, they could, but I don't think, oh, I do believe that one year, we started earlier. We started at six.
I bet we could end by the time the polls close.
But don't they have to be sworn in by selectmen for it to be official?
Yeah, it'd be sworn in.
Oh, she's right there. She's right there, and swearing right in.
Oh, oh, okay.
It's time, time's up, that's...
But because it's contested, I'm not sure that the results will necessarily be released immediately.
Last year, you popped in, but you sat in the audience.
Yeah.
Did anybody have any problems with that?
I think that's the way we should do it. I agree with that.
Are you comfortable meeting in the library? That's typically where we've met.
Yes, that'd be perfect. Thank you. Is there anything else that anyone needs to put on the budget for that meeting?
On the agenda?
Greg, just do it.
Talk about the budget.
Just talk about the budget. Oh, yes, it was, it really is. You can tell where my mind is. On the agenda for that meeting? Or if you get...
Well, we'll have more time to add, right?
Right, I was going to say, if you have things to add, please let me know. You have plenty of time, and we will then have our joint meeting in April.
Yeah.
All right? Okay, then I would like to, may motion to enter into executive session?
So, we have to adjourn to...
Do I have to adjourn this one first? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Executive, all in favor? All right, I have a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to collective bargaining.
And not to return to open?
Not to return to open session.
So, move. Thank you all.
All in favor? All right, thank you.